So we just as a community need to work together to ensure that we can tackle that problem.
We're here today with New York City Councilman Rafael Salamanca, who represents the 17th Council District in the Bronx. Councilmember Salamanca, thank you for coming back.
Thank you for having me.
So what are your thoughts on the passing of the budget?
This year's budget was one budget that the city of New York, we haven't seen something like this in many years in terms of deficits. You know, when COVID hit, you know, it did not just affect our lives and our health, but there was also an effect in terms of our economy. This year's budget that we approved, we approved about an eighty, it was about an $88 billion budget. And we had a $9 billion revenue shortfall. There was a deficit. And so a lot of tough decisions needed to be made and needed to be had. And for those individuals that don't really know how the budget works, you know, the mayor presents his budget to us. And we as a council, even though as a legislature, we are the ones who give the final stamp of approval of the budget. But when the mayor proposed his budget, what he originally proposed was budget cuts. He cut some of youth, you know, he proposed budget cuts to cultural institutions. He cut, he did budget cuts to seniors. And when we're talking about NYPD, you know, NYPD has a $6 billion budget and he only proposed an about 0.01% budget cut, which was about $23 million, which was totally unacceptable to us when he first gave us this budget, way before, you know, there was an outcry to defund the police. So members in the council from the very beginning were working with the administration and telling him how this is unacceptable. And we were looking to see how we were going to be able to give budget cuts across the board, including NYPD, and we were working on that. And so again, and you know, as things elevated and there was a cry for defund the police, you know, and we understand, we as a council, and me as someone that sits in the BNT, in the budget negotiating team, we went line by line to see how we were going to be able to make adequate cuts to NYPD without jeopardizing our public safety. And I think that that's what's key here. And so, you know, in this budget, we were able to identify a little over a billion dollars in budget cuts in NYPD. Actually about $837 million in cuts and transfers that we were able to identify. But when you, when you add the fringe benefits and the other associated cuts, it comes to about a billion dollars. Could we have done better? Absolutely. You know, I believe that we could have done better. Are we gonna do better? Absolutely. But with these cuts, we were able to restore key services and programs that we needed. For example, the mayor, he proposed a cut to summer youth employment, you know, and so we were able to restore that. We were able, at least we were able to restore about 35,000 slots. And, you know, the youth have up to July 15th so that they can apply for summer youth. We were able to restore youth programs. We were able to restore healthcare programs. You know, there were very little touches or cuts to housing and anti eviction services. There were very little cuts to food insecurities, senior services, and very little cuts to education. So, you know, this budget was a real difficult budget because we had to make really difficult decisions. But, you know, we as a council, I strongly believe that we did the best that we can in the circumstances that we are in. And we are now getting ready for the next fiscal year, which will be fiscal year 22's budget, which I believe because of COVID and the economic impact it's had, is going to be, there is going to be a worse, more budget than this one that we just approved.
So, do you think the cuts in the NYPD would have been a little bit more significant if, you know, the call for defunding police occurred earlier in the year?
Well, you know, to be, to be quite frank, we were, when the mayor, before the calls were made for defund NYPD, the council as a body and as a BNT, we were looking into cuts to NYPD. Like, there's no way you're going to cut summer youth employment, or there's no way that you're gonna do cuts across the board to all these different agencies of some 40%. And then when you look at the NYPD budget of a $6 billion budget, you're gonna propose only $23 million cut from $6 billion. That is totally unacceptable, you know, and we went line by line. You know, we're cutting about a billion dollars in expense. And we also cut about $500 million in capital projects. When we went line by line, you know, we, and we knew that, we realized, you know, NYPD had dollars in terms of to purchase equipment that they really did not need. You know, when we're talking about, you know, NYPD, they have about nine to 11 helicopters. Why do you need more money to purchase another helicopter? When some of you kids, we could use that money to put capital dollars in to purchase computers for kids in schools. You know, we, what we did also was, you know, NYPD normally has about four, four classes a year. We eliminated two of those classes, you know, and we were able to reshift that funding elsewhere. But something else that we did with NYPD, there was a big call, and you know what? They were absolutely right. How do we take out NYPD out of schools? But we need to keep our kids safe. So what we were able to do is that we were able to transfer, we were able to transfer school safety officers out of NYPD, and we were able to take them and put them over to the Department of Education. But what was key here, you know, there was a call to eliminate, there was a call to eliminate 5,500 jobs from school safety officers. But when you look at these school safety officers, who are they? They're predominantly black and brown and Latino women and men, you know, getting paid low wage jobs who are keeping our kids safe. And so we made a decision that we didn't, why, why would we eliminate 5,500 jobs when we can just reshift them over to the Department of Education? Retrain them, you know, on ways on how they can be retrained so that they, they can, they can play a positive role in our kids' lives while keeping them safe in schools.
Now, given the inception of the call to defund the police and the mass marching and the protests, what are your general thoughts about what's, what the social climate and the social pushback against law enforcement?
I mean, but when I, there were many protests that happened and, you know, there was a group that came, a small group of about nine people came to protest in front of my home. I was, I was in front of my home with my wife and my son, you know, and I went down to speak to them. After they left, my neighbors all came to me to ask me what was happening. I explained to them that we were going through the budget process and that there were cuts. And that these groups, these individuals, you know, they were interested in a, in a deep cut to NYPD. And quite frankly, all my neighbors said absolutely not. You know, you know, I represent the South Bronx, you know. You know, yes, we do not want over policing in our communities, but my neighbors in my communities want to feel safe. You know, we have issues with gun violence. We have issues with violence overall. And we depend on our precincts, our men and women in the police department to keep us safe. And, you know, yes, you know, when, when you look at a budget and you see where you need to cut, you need to try to balance it out. And everyone needs to take a cut. But we need to protect, you know, these vulnerable populations and we need to protect these key programs such as summer youth, education, you know, the arts. And so that is why we, we, we took the direction that we took in terms of making some decisions of cutting these, you know, cutting some of this funding from NYPD and reshifting it to, to programs that are much needed. But we also took a overall look as to how NYPD works and we did some key changes. For example, the school crossing guards, they report to NYPD. We're removing that out of NYPD and we were shifting that to the Department of Transportation, who I think is, you know, with the whole Vision Zero, their goal or their vision is to ensure that there is less pedestrian fatalities in the streets. And so who can train them better than not the Department of Transportation? You know, we reduced overtime by $352 million. Homeless outreach, you know, this was, NYPD had a division of homeless outreach. But NYPD really should not be overseeing homeless outreach. Individuals, professionals, you know, professional organizations, under the Department of Homeless Services, they're the ones that should be overseeing homeless outreach. So we shifted that funding to where it belongs. Now, that funding is not just manpower, but that funding is also going to be used to train individuals who are gonna go out in the street and try to get individuals that are homeless, take them off the streets and put them into housing or put them into a shelter, which is key here. I mentioned that we eliminated two classes, which we reduced the headcount by 1,100 officers. And so we, we took a responsible approach here where we wanted to ensure that, you know, we saved programs, but that we did not jeopardize the public safety of individuals here in the city of New York.
Over the last couple of weeks, we've seen a spike in shootings. We've seen the rampant firework use around, around the city. And for those people that use those examples to argue against defunding or the reshuffling of law enforcement resources, what can you say to them to at least try to bridge a gap of understanding why, why the city is going, is going in the, in the direction of trying, trying to utilize the funding or defunding of the police department to deal with the other things that, that need to be dealt with?
You know, we, when we negotiated this budget, you know, again, there were key programs that we needed to keep that help keep our youth off the streets. Now, COVID has pulled, you know, has kind of pulled a rug from underneath us, which, you know, some of our after school programs are closed, not because of funding, just because, you know, we just can't be there because of COVID, because of health reasons. And so, you know, we figure out a way how to properly social distance and protect one another without, you know, becoming ill. During the summer months, you know, we, there, there always seems to be a spike in some type of shootings, and we know that. But throughout, throughout the years, the city of New York is not what it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago. It is much safer. Has there been a spike in shootings? Yes, there has been a spike in shootings. And, you know, we're, we're working with our officers in the NYPD and also the NCO officers in the community to bridge that gap to see how we eliminate gun violence within our communities. You know, at this moment, with the increase of gun violence that's happening, there has been no decrease or there has been zero dollars taken away from NYPD. So for those individuals that want to attribute the gun violence to the decisions that we just made to this budget, well, they're wrong, you know, and they're, they're giving misinformation. And so, you know, in this budget, we also made sure that we did not lose any jobs. And again, public safety has played a major role. What we need to do is that we need to continue to figure out ways on how to have programs so that we can keep our youth and adolescents off the streets and keep them entertained. We need to work with our district attorney so that we can, you know, have more gun buyback programs that we need. And in terms of 4th of July, listen, I'm 40 years old. I lived in the city of New York my entire life. When it comes time to 4th of July, there's always fireworks. You know, this is not something new. But I think it's those individuals that want to distract from what's really happening and want to blame, oh, they wanted to fund the police and, and, and this is the reason why there's fireworks. I think that's just misinformation that's being had. The mayor acknowledged that there was issues with fireworks and the mayor put a task force together to tackle that issue. And could they have done a better job? I think everyone could have done a better job. But it's an ongoing problem. And regardless of what anyone says, like, let's be realistic. I am from the South Bronx. We're gonna have that same problem next year on 4th of July in terms of fireworks. So we just as a community need to work together to ensure that we can tackle that problem.
Have you been able to speak to anybody from NYPD or law enforcement? And if so, have you been able to talk, have you, have you, have you been able to get their sentiment about what's going on?
No, I have. Look, I have a good relationship with all my precinct commanding officers, you know, and, and the precincts themselves. Just yesterday, I did a food drive with the 411 precinct. You know, we gave out over 800 boxes of food and, you know, to the community. We gave out masks. And I addressed the, I addressed the roll call at 3:00 PM, you know, and I, and I had a very honest conversation with them about the decisions that we made in terms of the budget, you know, in the city council. And they understood, you know, when, when we're talking about budget cuts and we're talking about programs, they're key programs that we need to keep alive. They're key programs that we need to have so that we can keep our adolescents, you know, and our youth busy and off the streets. And when we're talking about cutting city, you know, cutting budgets throughout the entire city agency, it was irresponsible, again, I'm gonna say it again, it was irresponsible of the mayor to propose such a small budget cut to an agency that has a $6 billion budget, probably one of the highest budgets in the entire city of New York in terms of agency. So this onus, in terms of how the messaging went out, I blame the mayor for this, for, you know, taking an irresponsible approach and saying, you know what? I'm gonna cut some of youth off the back. And you know what he created? He created chaos. He created, you know, kids didn't know what was gonna happen with them during the summer. Parents did not know what was gonna happen during the summer. And so the council took a proactive approach by bringing back these programs. So when I went and I explained this to the officers, and we explained how we saved jobs, we explained how, you know, the advocates wanted a cut 5,500 jobs on school safety and who they were. They were black and Latino, you know, black and brown and Latino individuals, and we saved those jobs. They understood, they understood exactly why we made these tough decisions. And so, you know, I, I respect NYPD. I respect the work that they do in our communities. Are there individuals who are overzealous? Absolutely. And those are the officers that we do not need in the police force. Those are the officers that we do not need patrolling our streets. We want officers that are gonna interact with our communities. We want officers that are gonna keep us safe in our communities. And we want officers who are gonna work with us in our communities.
So what do you think is the road, what does the road to public trust within law enforcement and the NYPD in, in, in your opinion, look like?
Well, I mean, it starts with relationships, you know, first of all, you know. I know they, they talk about B cops back in the days, cops that would walk up and down the streets and they just knew our neighbors by names. You know, it, it starts with, you know, retraining officers in terms of how to interact with communities of color. You know, I know that this mayor in the last couple of years, his focus has been to, to, to have, you know, officers that are patrolling our streets that actually are from our communities and look like, look like us, you know, black and brown individuals, Latinos, where they can relate to our struggles, you know. When you, when you walk around, at least in my district, you know, there's, you do have private homes, but you also have a lot of buildings, you know. And to be quite frank, in the summer months, people want to be outside. They want to enjoy the good weather. And not everyone has a front yard and a backyard, you know. The front of someone's building is their backyard, you know. And when I go and I talk to these officers, I remind them of that. I said, be respectful of these individuals that are sitting in front of their buildings because they're just trying to enjoy the weather just like everyone else. And that is their backyard. And because they're sitting in front of their building doesn't mean that they're, they're, you know, they're creating a nuisance in our communities. So I think that, you know, as we reform NYPD and as we have conversations as to how to interact with one another, I think, I think that's a long, that's a long conversation and, and, and there's a lot of work that, that needs to be done. But I'm positive that, that we, we're moving in the right direction.
As a member of the Education Committee in the city council, what discussions have been going on about what the next school year is going to look like?
We're, we're trying to figure that out, you know. We, we, you know, the mayor made an announcement this week that he's working with the Department of, the Department of Education, the chancellor, on ideas as to how to open up schools. Whether it's a half a day, whether it's a couple of days out of the week. You know, they're trying to figure out how to improve remote learning. And these are all conversations that we're having. And, you know, and, you know, someone that has, I have a five-year-old at home, you know, these last, he was in kindergarten and these last couple of months during COVID, I mean, remote learning was difficult, you know. And I mentioned this the last time we spoke, you know, I'm not an educator, you know. I, and so it, when they gave Aiden his lesson plans, I had to really sit down with Aiden and watch the tutorial so that I can learn, you know, so I can educate him and teach him the right way. You know, math, the way they educate our kids on math is totally different, you know. Two plus two is always four, at least it was for me. But now they want, they want to expand how they get two plus two equals four, different scenarios which can be very tricky. And so I struggled with that. And, and, and my wife did much better than I did when it came, you know, when it came to the educational component. But I know that by me struggling, hundreds and thousands of families also struggled with that as well. I also know that there was issues with technology. Not all families had technology. The Education Department, eventually they got it right. But a lot of families did not have technology at home because they did not know how to access that technology. I think those are lessons learned for the Department of Education on how they're gonna roll out the new educational session now when September comes. And so I know there are conversations, there are conversations that are being had. And there's also safety conversations. How do you social distance in a classroom? You know, in some, some classes have 30 kids in one classroom, which, you know, they're overpopulated. Well, how do you, how do you, it's impossible in this COVID world to bring in 30 kids in one classroom and keep them safe. You know, that's, that's just impossible. And so the Department of Education is working, I know I've been talking to my principals. They've been working, you know, with schools, with individual schools. They've been working with individual principals and teachers. And they are brainstorming on how to bring kids back to the classrooms in a safe way. And, and those conversations are still happening. So I, and I look forward to having these conversations. And I just feel privileged to be sitting at a table while these conversations are happening as a parent.
So we're, we're seeing numbers tick up a bit in, in the city. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's not as bad as what the rest of the country is going through. But given the prediction of another spike coming of COVID, what is the city preparing to do to deal with it, especially for, you know, vulnerable, vulnerable populations like, like senior citizens?
Yeah, so, you know, there's, there's many steps. First, you know, we're, we're asking everyone to get tested, not just getting the COVID test, but getting your antibody test. You know, we, you know, and, and that's important. And the city's opening, has opened up these testing sites throughout all boroughs, all five boroughs. They're free. And so number one, you know, it's important that everyone gets tested. Secondly, you know, social distancing is not just keeping that distance from that individual, but it's also taking the precautions to keep yourself safe. Washing your hands with soap and water as often as you can, not really touching your face. If you don't have access to soap and water, you know, using hand sanitizers. But also being reminded that when, the fifth time after using the hand sanitizer, you have to wash your hands with soap and water. And most importantly, wearing face covers, wearing a face mask. And I think that that is, has been one of our biggest challenges, especially with our youth. You know, we, our, our youth, you know, we, we, we have to continue to educate them that just because they're not feeling any symptoms does not mean that they're not asymptomatic, does not mean that they can't get, you know, someone else ill, someone in their family sick. And that is how this, this disease, you know, this, this virus is gonna continue and continue to attack us until we, we finally address it. And individuals take their, take responsibilities for themselves and follow the rules. Something that the city has done that I want to give them credit for is that the city, at least the mayor, has not, has, has not moved in a rapid pace to just open up the city, you know, and, and I congratulate him for that because I think that he is taking the right approach there. And I need to congratulate the governor. And, you know, because, you know, for the last four months, we've had press conferences every day informing us of the numbers, of the spikes, informing us of do's and don'ts, and really educating us on how we are going to beat this virus. And to be quite frank, we did really well. We, there was a lot of loss, you know. I, I lost my dad. I have friends and family members who lost their parents, loved ones, siblings. You know, there, there was a lot of loss here. But as time has gone by and we've been educated as a city, you know, and when you look at all 50 states throughout the country, I think we have at the moment one of the lowest COVID, you know, positive results. And that has to do because of our experience and we took it seriously. And so as we move forward, you know, dealing with this virus, it's important that we remind ourselves that yes, we are educated, but the virus still exists. There's no cure. There's no vaccine. It's still there. And we, we, we need to continue to take the precautions that we took when it first hit and we were scared as hell that, you know, that we were gonna get this and, you know, we were gonna contaminate someone. That same fear that we had back in March and April, it's the same fear that we need to have today to protect ourselves.
As you mentioned last, the last time we spoke, the, the, from the loss of your, the loss of your father and finding out how nursing homes were still admitting infected seniors with COVID, what, what have been the steps that have been made for, at least from the city to, to, to guard against that and also, you know, further protect senior citizens?
Yeah, so just to be clear, you know, the, the city of New York does not have oversight over, over nursing homes. We have, we have oversight over senior centers, you know, and what we did is that we just shut them all down because that was just the right thing to do, to protect our most vulnerable population. The state has oversight over the nursing homes, you know, and it was, and I said this before, and I talk about personal experience, it was not a good decision by the governor's office to allow, or to mandate that senior, that nursing homes take seniors that are affected with COVID and put them in with populations that do not have COVID. You know, COVID is an airborne disease, you know, and there's still a lot of unknowns, you know. I still don't understand how my dad, who was on the fourth floor, you know, got COVIDed. You're telling me you took all the necessary precautions with PPEs and, you know, and whoever was interacting with him, you know, was, was safe and they tested them and they didn't have COVID. And you have individuals that were tested positive with COVID and you had them on the second floor. You didn't intertwine those populations. So how did it get there, right? Well, it's, it's an airborne disease, you know. You have the HVAC systems. It could have traveled through the air. It could have, you know, from the second floor went to the fourth floor. My father could have just breathed it in. I don't know those answers. And those are, those are, those are questions that the governor's office and the state needs to come up with. And I do know that, I believe it's next week or the week after, the Assembly and the State Senate will have hearings on nursing homes and COVID. And, you know, there, and I'm, and I'm pretty sure that there's going to be, there's gonna be these tough questions that they're gonna ask the Department, the Department of Health. And my, my office is preparing a statement because I, I have questions as to how this happened. I do know that the governor, in, in, in the phases as he's reopening, I know that he has put in some mandates on, on businesses that have HVAC systems. And I believe that they have to have some type of blue light filtration which kills, which kills airborne pathogens that are in the air. And so I imagine that these are the same policies that they're gonna ask these nursing homes to implement. But again, I, I look forward to this hearing that the State Assembly and the Senate is gonna have on nursing homes and COVID.
When it comes to small businesses and we have, through the phases of reopening, and again, I bring up the, the, the prediction of, of a second wave, what are some of, is there anything that small business owners can do to prepare them? to prepare themselves for a potential lockdown, another potential lockdown?
I mean, we, we, look, the goal here is not to have another potential lockdown, right? The goal here is to, to, as we opening, a- as we're in phase three, I believe, and the governor's looking, you know, into phase four, at least in the city. Um, you know, what we're seeing as you go to some of these stores is the measures that these small businesses have taken to protect themselves and protect their customers. Now, when you go into a bodega, you go into a beauty store, you know, they have these uh glass partitions so that there is, that, you know, um, you know, i- i- in terms of fluid coming out, eh, you could protect the employees and the customers. Um, the barber shops, you know, they, um, I know that there was some trainings, or at least my barber told me that there was some trainings that he needed to take. Um, and, and so now, um, you know, they, they need to wear their protective equipment, whether it's masks, gloves, a face mask. I went to my barber shop a few days ago and the owner put partitions between all chairs. So in essence, you're like in your own little cube with your, with your barber. Um, you know, I, I encourage small businesses as they're opening up and as they're applying for these loans and as the economy i- i- is opening up again, that they take all the measures necessary to protect their employees and to protect their customers. Because if we do that, and, and I, and I strongly believe that if we take those measures and we follow the rules of COVID, there will not be a second wave. Or if there is a second wave, it'll be a very minimal second wave, which we can attack immediately. And, you know, and we do not need to go back to quarantining and shutting down the city and the state for months. Um, so I'm confident that, you know, people in the city of New York, especially the business owners, you know, they took a big financial hit by this and they don't want this to happen again. And they're gonna take all the measures that they can to protect themselves, their customers and their employees.
You mentioned earlier that the, the outlook for the 2020 um fiscal ye- uh fiscal budget is, is, i- it's, it's, there's gonna be a lot more difficult decisions to make. So being able to have that sort of foresight, um, what, i- i- is there anything that, that, that organizations, nonprofits, uh, social, uh, the, the, the social service industry um can prepare for and even higher education can prepare for to um, in order, in, in, in order to prepare for that, for that year's budget?
Yeah, so, look, we, we just approved the fiscal uh 21 budget and we're, you know, we're looking at fiscal 22, fiscal FY22, which we're gonna approve and vote on in June of, in June of 2022. Um, when you look at the economy, right? Um, and you want an economy to thrive, in order for an economy to thrive, there needs to be jobs, right? Jobs, you know, creates, you know, income, income creates taxes, right? And um, income, you know, and also income creates that you can go and you can buy things. And as a result, you know, you can hire more people and that's how the economy evolves and the economy rotates. What I learned, or what we learned with COVID is that, you know, when you shut down, when we, and when they shut down the city, they shut down every business that was not an essential business, right? And you saw the effect that that had on us and our budget this year. We saw that. Programs were cut, there were cuts that were made across the board. And there are concerns that next year's budget will be worse if our economy does not come back to what we expect it to come back uh so that we can recoup those revenues, the city revenues. What we also learned with COVID is that there are many jobs that you do not physically have to be in your office to perform those duties, you know? Um, you can perform those duties at home, off-site, there's remote working, right? There's remote learning. And these are conversations that we're having. How do you keep the economy open, you know, with remote learning, with remote working? It can happen, it, it can happen, right? You can, you know, um, um, my, for example, my office is closed because um, ci- city, city offices are closed. But my staff are working from home. We're still doing constituent services from home, we're on the phone, we're sending emails out. Um, when it's necessary to go on-site, we go on-site. We wear our proper protective equipment to protect us and protect our constituents. Um, but what I'm trying to get at, that there are many jobs that can keep the economy thriving that we can do from home, we can do remote working from home. And those are conversations that are really out of the box thinking that I know that city government and eh, eh, is having. Well, I know at the city council level, these are conversations that we're having to see how can we keep the economy thriving while people are working from home.
You know what I find interesting is, let's just say COVID goes away tomorrow. This is all hypothetical, obviously, but it goes away tomorrow, we reopen sometime next week or in the next coming weeks, or even Monday. What I find fascinating is how people are going to re-acclimate, going back to work, right? Because we've been, you know, away from one another for such a long time. I, 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 like, as a social exper- experiment, it'll be interesting, but it'll be a very, eh, eh, it's something that has to be said about the mental health eh, of, of, of communities and society in general from being shuttered away for so long.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. Eh, you know, um, to be quite frank, I, you know, as I talk to people and, you know, some people, um, some of my constituents, or even my friends in the beginning, they were okay, they were home. Um, you know, that, a, a big percentage of them, they were, they were receiving unemployment. I mean, they, they had income coming in, you know? Um, but as time went by, many of them just want to get out, you know? They want to go back to work, you know? They miss that, that interaction, dealing with people. Um, but mental health, you're, you're absolutely right. And that's, that's another conversation that is being had is how, how our mental health has been affected by COVID, you know? Where from one day to another, the city was just shut down. We, we, we were not allowed to, you know, we were not allowed to interact with one another. You know, when loss happened, we were not allowed to show our human affection with one another, you know? When um, when my dad passed away, I couldn't hug my sister. It just couldn't, it could just couldn't happen. Um, you know, um, a few months after that, my, 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 my wife's brother passed away, you know? Um, non-COVID related, you know? Uh, he had other underlying conditions, but um, family couldn't get together and hug one another because we just did not, there was the, the unknowns of are you transmitting this virus from one another? And um, and that had a, that had a severe mental effect on individuals. Depression, depression was big, depression is still big now uh because of what we're going through. And so as we do open up the city and, and as work comes back, you know, it's now more than ever that, that we need these mental health professionals um to, to, to help those individuals that are suffering through depression or other uh mental health issues. And um, and these are conversations that we're having um, and, and we need to continue to have.
Is there anything that you'd like to add that you feel like we haven't talked about or, or, or touched upon today?
No, listen, we, 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 we touched on the budget. I know that that's been one of the biggest conversations that, you know, we, that's, that's been happening in the last three weeks, you know? Um, and, you know, just want constituents and individuals in the city of New York to know that, you know, as a council, you know, we, we passed the budget, a, a budget on time because it was important that we pass the budget. But we don't want them to think that, you know, their voices were not heard. You know, we, as we speak, we're going line by line in NYPD's budget, but not just NYPD's budget, but then through other, through other city agencies to figure out where we, we can identify waste. You know, there, there is waste in city government and, and it's, it's, it's up to us to figure that out. And, and our finance department is, is going line by line in every city agency to figure out where we can identify waste so that we can reshuffle those dollars and, and then put them back to these programs that, that took some cuts, you know? And, and we want to restore these programs. Um, and, and, and so, you know, I, I, I just want individuals to know that, you know, we, we, we're, we're laser focused on this. And um, you know, and, and we're excited about opening up the city. Um, we're excited about getting back to work. We are, I know in the summer months, the council and, and, and the community boards, they're more lax in terms of their um, their, their, their committee meetings that they have on Zoom. Um, but we're eager, we're eager to really get back to work and, 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 and do the, and do the people's work. Um, you know, we're still accessible, you can email us, you can call us. Um, and um, we're, we're here and we're ready to respond. Um, and I really want to thank you for giving me this platform to really, to give my side of the story as to some of the decisions or why I took certain decisions to vote yes for the budget. Um, and also giving me the platform to, 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 to talk about the challenges that, you know, COVID has had in my communities and, you know, how I'm working hand in hand with my colleagues and, and the stakeholders and my constituents um, uh, to move our community forward.
Councilman Rafael Salamanca, thank you for your time. Thank you again for coming, coming back and, and talking with me. And um, yeah, hopefully I'll see you soon.
Yeah, man, all right? Good seeing you, man, thank you.